Clerk Roll Call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Jacobs.
Here.
Councilman Grover. Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Sedan.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President King.
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council incorporated in manual meetings notice of 2011, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the voting board on December 28, 2011, consented to Star Ledger and Home Interim Union, compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. Is there any person present in the matter of the public who wishes to address City Council? They may do so at this time. Any person present who wishes to address City Council on any matter whatsoever, they may do so at this time? Is there none? Close that portion of the meetings. Before we move on to new business, SIO Bustamante has provided us with the agenda for Monday's ABC meeting, and I actually suggested it to him rather than him hand-deliver this to our house. I said, "Why don't you get it to us prior to City Council meeting, and that way you can save you a trip." So, everybody should be in your seat of this. Okay. New business?
Letter dated October 12, 2011 from Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to issue a fidelity official bond covering Paul Lesniak, City Treasurer, Tax Collector with the Hartford Insurance Company through Agent Record, Hugh Plummer Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, for the period of December 1, 2011 to December 1, 2012, at an annual premium of $1,750.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 12, 2011 from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing a final premium adjustment in the total sum of $8,096 submitted as a result of imported to the resolution dated July 26, 2011, authorizing the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance policy with Midwest Employers Casualty Company through Agent Record Regional Risk Managers LLC, at an annual premium of $172,069, raising the amount of the premium to $180,242.62.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 13, 2011 from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Division of Capital Supply Inc., Bayonne, New Jersey, for auto parts and accessories for various departments for the period October 4, 2011 through September 25, 2012, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 13, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Courier Printing Corp., Deposit New York for the furnishing of printing recycling brochures for a period of two years in an amount not to exceed $21,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 13, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Triangle Communications LLC, Millington, New Jersey, for the purchase of Data 911 Computers for eight LPR 2011 Ford Explorers for the Police Department at a total cost of $51,864.
I'd like to recognize Councilman Perkins-Adusty.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Comments?
Do you agree?
Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 13, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Route 23 Auto Mall, Butler, yeah, Butler, New Jersey, for OEM automotive parts and accessories for light-duty vehicles for various departments for the period of October 12, 2011 through October 12, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 13, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Route 23 Auto Mall, Butler, New Jersey, for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period October 12, 2011 through March 17, 2012, at a cost not to exceed $25,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 13, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Route 23 Auto Mall, Butler, New Jersey, for maintenance and repairs for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period October 12, 2011 through February 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 14, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Jetback Inc., Wharton, New Jersey, for two each mechanical street sweepers in the amount of $348,000 and to waive a clerical error when correcting their pricing to pass on a discount received from the manufacturer prior to the submission of their bid.
Comments? Councilman?
That's enough. I said so.
Put it on.
My God.
Letter dated October 17, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Pitney Bowls, viewing, New Jersey, for the furnishing of postage, equipment, maintenance, and postage supplies for the period October 15, 2011 through September 30, 2012, at a cost not to exceed $225,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 17, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Somerset, New Jersey, for installation of 13 14-foot-tall Classic One poles for lighting of the Elizabeth River Trail Phase One in the total amount of $51,676.67.
Comments?
Can we find out to which area? I mean, I don't see any work getting done. How do we order the pole before they do the layout?
The work on the River Trail is going to be between South Broad Street and Bridge Street. That's the, that's Phase One.
Right, I know that. But I'm saying, do we order the pole before we do the work?
Well, I assume that you need the equipment to install when, I think they're about ready to do the work, and I guess they, I guess installation of lights should be part of the job.
This has been ready for the last three years, if I'm not mistaken.
It's taken a long time.
It's taken a long time.
There's going to be a, some kind of a groundbreaking. I think there's some literature out about that, which I'm sure the council has got, on, I think it's Wednesday, the 26th of October, 11:00.
I didn't see any flyer in my package yet. Probably when I reach to the bottom, I'll get to see it.
Well, it's out there.
Just to remind, I am the ward councilman. I think I should have the courtesy to know exactly what's happening.
You should.
Not today for tonight, but at least, you know, three years in advance, we've been working on this, and I was on the committee also to go along with this. But to see, to order the pole before they do any kind of other work, I don't know. Put them on, but, you know.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending to amend Chapter 2.56.110, Section B of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically relating to the Table of Organization of the Elizabeth Police Department as follows. Delete police civilian. Senior Personnel Clerk One, Clerk Type is 11. Clerks Two, Senior Public Safety Communicators Four, Senior Clerk Type is Two, for a total of 20. To add police civilian, Personnel Aid Typing One, Keyboarding Clerk One, 11. Clerk One, Three. Security Systems Operators Five, Keyboarding Clerk Two, Five. Management Assistance Two. Um, no, ma, no. Keyboarding Clerks Two. Management Assistance One, and Community Relations Specialist One, for a total of 24.
Comments?
Yeah. What does this really mean? We're going from five titles to seven different titles, from 20 positions to 24. What does this mean in terms of salaries and things like that also?
Well, there were requirements from the civil service, just changing titles, and the policeman's really driven by the second page where you see Security Systems Operators. They're going to be, uh, non-uniform operators reviewing all the monitors for the, uh, the assist cameras on the different streets and so on, so. Rather than that policeman do that, they're going to have policemen substitute.
No, that's why I was going to say, instead of having policemen do those jobs.
Right, it's going to be civilians.
Security systems, all the cameras.
Okay. Other comments? Put it on.
Okay. Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Business Administrator recommending to amend Chapter 2.60.90, Section B of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically relating to the Table of Organization of the Elizabeth Fire Department, uh, as follows. Delete fire civilians. Clerk Type is Three, Clerk One, Senior Clerk Type is One, for a total of Five. To add fire civilians, keyboarding clerk One, Three. Clerks One, Two. Keyboarding clerk Two, One. Management Assistant, One, for a total of Seven.
Comments? Put it on.
It's basically all same, but the title is.
Yeah. The salary, you got that.
Put it on, please.
A civilian, but they carry salary.
Okay, ready? October 18, 2011, from Business Administrator, recommending to amend the city's Table of Organization of Classified and Unclassified Titles, specifically Ordinance Number 1747, as follows. Delete assessing clerk Typing One. Assistant Violations Clerk Two. Clerk 23, Clerk Type is 43. Community Relations Specialist One. Clerk Community Relations Aid One. Docket Clerk Three. Health Aid One. Legal Analyst One. Personnel Aid Typing One. Principal Assessing Clerk Typing One. Principal Clerk Seven. Principal Clerk Type is Six. Recreation Leader, Senior Citizen Four. Senior Assessing Clerk One. Senior Assessing Clerk Typing One. Senior Citizen Program Aid Six, and Senior Clerk Ten. Senior Clerk Type is Fifteen. Senior Personnel Clerk One. Supervising Clerk Two. Technical Assistant Land Use One. Violations Clerk Two, for a total of 134. To add assessing aid Two. Assistant Violations Clerk Four. Clerk One, Twenty. Keyboarding Clerk One, Thirty-Three. Clerk Community Relations Aid Two. Health Aid Two. Paralegal Specialist One. Personnel Aid Typing Two. Senior Assessing Aid One. Clerk Three, Seven. Keyboarding Clerk Three, Nine. Recreation Leader, Four. Senior Management Assistant, One. Senior Citizen Program Aid Four. Community Service Aid Two. Clerk Two, Thirteen. Public Information Assistant, One. Keyboarding Clerk Two, Fifteen. Management Assistant, One. Principal Auditor, One. Relocation Claims Assistant, One. Program Development Specialist Aging, One. Personnel Assistant, One. Clerk Four, Two. Field Representative Senior Citizens Bilingual, One. Violations Clerk Three, for a total of 134. And not really changing. They just changed the title.
Other comments?
Assistant Personnel.
Put it on.
The salary being same. The salary goes up? No, no. Same, just change the title. Civil service.
Okay. Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the City Attorney, requesting an ordinance to amend Chapter 10.28.30 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Stage One, No Parking Mounds on Certain Streets, and to amend Chapter 10.28.7 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Forty-Five Degree Angle Parking, specifically to clarify for parking allowed on Broadway between Front Street and First Street.
Comments?
Can you run it again?
This, what, this comes out of the fact that half of Broadway between First and Front Street was vacated. So, what was the middle of the street turns out to be the south side of the street, and it, what it did was it confused the parking. There's angle parking in that block, and unfortunately, some police officers gave out tickets, and in order to clarify and make sure that the residents are able to legally park there, this is a proposal to clarify the language. So, the parking will be allowed on basically what becomes the south side of the street. Councilman Maza has asked for this, and we've heard it by him. I mean, Grover, Grover, excuse me.
It's all the same.
And, and it's one, discussions have been had with the Police Department, and they have no problem with it.
So, currently, they park at an angle.
They currently park at an angle. They will continue to park at an angle. This just clarifies the fact that it's legal parking.
Okay, so it's not make, we're not making any changes?
You're not making any changes.
Because whenever I go, and I always park at an angle on Broadway.
Yeah.
Other comments? Put it on, please.
Now, what, what is, isn't other things attached to it? Is that all this is about? Is that one issue?
It's entire package.
Yeah, but the whole package is.
Is this about the angle parking?
Correct. Okay.
Letter dated October 4, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to cancel refund credit and overbilling of taxes for the 2011 tax year on the property located at 354-356 Rose Hill Place in the amount of $6,803.33, and for the 2010 tax year on the property located at 211 Elizabeth Avenue in the amount of
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 12, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to refund credit and overbilling of taxes for the 2011 calendar year taxes on the property located at 225 South Broad Bond Street in the sum of $1,981.69.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 17, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to refund credit, cancel, and overbilling of the 2011 calendar year taxes on the property located at partial 653-655 Carteret Street in the sum of $9,726.21.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2012 State Fiscal Year Municipal and Zoo Utility Budget may be necessary.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the introduction of amendments to the 2012 State Fiscal Year Budget at the next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on October 25, 2011, public hearing on the amendments scheduled for November 9, 2011, and to consider adoption at the regular meeting of November 9, 2011.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a capital ordinance that would authorize the purchase and installation of the 911 Sentinel Patriot System, upgrading from analog to digital, and replaces the existing system in the amount of $1,500,000.
Comments? Councilman Gonzalez, Councilman.
I can't, can't believe what so using analog system for that.
2011. That's like. Council.
Yeah, I was just going to say, is there any grant money, any federal dollars to help pay for this? Anything?
Not that I'm aware of at the present time, but if it comes about, you know, I'm sure Susan's probably looking into it.
Other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the reinstatement of a residential payment in lieu of taxes on the property located at 453 Greer Avenue that was terminated for non-payment due to a loan modification problem with the mortgage company and financial hardship, and refund approximately $15,000.
Comments?
Who, who principally involved with this?
Uh, I have the names downstairs. Yeah.
Okay. Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 3, 2011 from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the nonprofit agencies for community development block grant funds, year 37, as listed on the Schedule A attached, for the period July 1, 2011 to June 30, 2012, in the amount of $1,901,126.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 17, 2011 from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute a third-party agreement to defer payment neighborhood stabilization program on the property located at 325 Fulton Street in the amount of $150,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 17, 2011 from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute third-party agreement, deferred payment neighborhood stabilization program on the property located at 218 Third Street in the amount of $260,000. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Thank you. In the past, when organizations requested community development block grant funding, I think we asked to see what was the initial amount they requested, or what was the total amount of the program? Let's say before it was $100,000, we give $100,000. I don't know if that's in, in the campaign. I don't see it. But in the future, can you just, what each program is getting? No.
Total amount.
The total amount. Like someone may say, my program is $55,000, and I'm requesting whatever. Oh, okay. I see the, yeah.
Other, I have a question. Sure. One of the, um, people who are asking, or a group who are asking for our money with Covenant House at 330 Washington Street, North New Jersey. I, I didn't know that we actually sent money out to other cities for community block grants.
They operate something called Raphael's Lifehouse in the City of Elizabeth, and the paper has passed through.
So, we're, we're giving this money to the Elizabeth branch or the Newark branch?
It's based in Newark, but they have, they have operations.
So, they're going to send the money back into Elizabeth?
I would, well, I mean, I don't know what this is about, but I do know that they have operations in Elizabeth.
Says here that, that it's the Covenant House Raphael's Lifehouse.
Right.
Yeah.
Raphael's Lifehouse is in Elizabeth.
So, evidently, they're sending the money back?
Yeah, it's a house on, I think it's on Core Street.
Tony, can we find out if that's going to happen? I mean, we, we've supported this before, but I just didn't realize the money went into Newark. I just thought it went directly to Raphael's Lifehouse.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So, I just want to make sure they get the $10,000. That's, that's.
And I understand what you're saying, because you have a corporate headquarters, and you're sending all the donations there.
Right. If it's coming back, okay. Thank you, Tony. Other comments? Next, then.
Letter dated October 17, 2011 from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute a third-party agreement to defer payment neighborhood stabilization program on property located at 218 Third Street in the amount of $260,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to rescind the resolution dated November 24, 2009, authorizing the execution of a third-party agreement for neighborhood stabilization program funds with Brand New Day Inc. for the 217-219 First Street project, specifically to redistribute the funds originally targeted for this project to other projects benefiting the Elizabeth Court neighborhood in the amount of $600,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
One thing.
Sure.
Why does the money have to stay in Elizabeth Court? I mean, why does it have to stay in Elizabeth Court? That's my only expert on it, Director. Does it have to stay in Elizabeth Court? Not that I have a problem with it, but do we have to put that in the reservation? I mean, we have a project.
Unless that grant, unless that grant.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't know, but I think, I thought NSP was, NSP is for, is for any neighborhood state organization. It can be, it can be anywhere that there needs to be neighborhood state. Yeah, I just wanted to know that.
We'll check with Director Arreza.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Councilman Jacobs?
If you, if you look at the Elizabeth Development Company, within there also, they're getting $600,000, and what they're saying is, is they're providing, creating jobs, developing businesses, revitalizing neighborhoods, and, I mean, it's, it's the last.
So, you mean, is it different?
Is that enough? I mean, this group has a major role in, in helping the City of Elizabeth. It is a terrible thing that we're in this kind of economic situation, and I don't know if $600,000 is enough.
Well, I would say, we don't know what they ask for, because it doesn't, you know, we have no benchmarks to say they want $2 million, we give $600,000.
Other comments? Next, then.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. President. BBC, isn't it down on First Street now, and they have this 288 North Road Street?
Yeah. Yes. They do okay.
Yeah, just as, I know the director, though, so. I guess it's, this lady's, or the gentleman does have one for me.
Next, then.
Letter dated October 14, 2011 from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have a lien placed against the properties listed on Schedule A attached for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $10,91.67.
Comments? Councilman Smith?
Just one question. Did you know if there was any progress with Councilman Grover brought out, what brought up last time, which is frequent people that we always have issues with? I don't know if that was.
The frequent people?
Yeah, like there's certain places that we, the properties we usually have frequent problems with, that they were going to.
I heard you was going to look into that, wasn't you?
Yeah, to look into assigning it to specific.
Yeah, I believe, John, we've been discussing with, uh, Councilman Grover. Last I heard, this was like about a month ago.
Yeah.
And I, my understanding is that he had.
They had a conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I believe so.
As long as, because I thought it was for ABS one.
Yeah, it's good.
I'm aggressive. Thank you, girlie.
Thank you. Other comments? Put it on. Next, then.
Letter dated October 18, 2011 from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Burzall Services for New York, New Jersey, to provide environmental consulting engineering services related to a portion of Sullivan Road and 630 Dowd Avenue, at a cost not to exceed $8,100.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated October 5, 2011 from the Police Director, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fund Grant Program Fiscal Year 2011, to fund local law enforcement efforts by municipalities responsible for the safe carers along U.S. Route 1 for an amount not to exceed $43,761.81.
Comments? Put it on, please.
There, His Honor, the mayor has asked for a commendation for George A. Castro. for George A. Castro II. He will be recognized by the Linden Capitero Lions Club. On Friday, November 11. Also, Council.
Says Friday, November 11. Oh, yeah, okay.
Also, Councilwoman Perkins DeGeste has asked for a memorial for Ms. Teresa Gierico, a former member of the Fair Rental Housing Board.
Thank you.
What happened?
She passed away.
She died?
Yeah.
Teresa, my cousin's ex-wife. Teresa Second Avenue and Nile Street.
Okay. The city treasurer has submitted the treasury report receipts and dispersments for the month of July 2011 and statement of bank balances and investments as of July 30, 2011. And that is for the petition.
Yeah, just had one announcement on the policy procedures. The Director of Public Works probably would like to have any calls for public service, et cetera, go directly to the Public Works Department before they go to any coordinator for public service, just to keep in the loop. And I think that goes for any other type of utilities. Let the Public Works Department know if there's any lights out, any problems, this and that. And then the council could call, I guess, the coordinator, but running through the Public Works Department first.
So let's, let's clear this up. In other words, if coordinated at the utility, you call Public Works first?
No, no, the council people are calling the coordinator for public service, et cetera, bypassing the Public Works Department.
Yeah, but the protocol was always to call Public Works. Why, how did that change?
A lot of people call the people directly.
They're going directly to the coordinators. This way, Public Works is at a disadvantage.
Yeah, but there are a couple of issues here. Sometimes, for whatever reason, we get better response by going directly to the utility. Number one. Number two, maybe contacting the utility at night or on Saturday or Sunday when somebody at Public Works.
Well, that's right, if you can follow up with the Public Works Department so that they, they could follow up. Yeah. You know, that's, that's a problem when we can.
No, I think when I have some issues, I can, I call Mr. Petty directly. That's why we have this problem so many, because he is an extension of, you know, of us. So when I have issues, I report him directly, even if it is a Saturday and he will respond, you know, graciously and, and take care of the situation. I think what Mrs. Ngarra is saying is that we as a body should not be following the PSEG representatives, the water representatives without first at least trying the proper protocol for which we are established, you know, the form of government that we have. We as councils go for contact with the directors first before they admit their speed and our balance. And then if that fails, then we can do that. But a lot of us have not been doing that.
Thank you very much. You know what your point is, if I make sure. Um, because we need to follow Robert's rules. And we also need to hold the gulf from that.
Right.
Thank you very much. Other comments, anything else, please? Uh, once around, Councilwoman?
Yes, Mrs. Ngarra or Mr. Gonzalez, perhaps you can send a letter to, I guess, I don't know, it was Madam, you can send a letter to or to the BA regarding our consultant. Now, he or she or that entity should not be overriding the advice and the consent of our code officials. Once they send that letter to, they said location and say you cannot put a certain business there, he should not override that until people that they can because that creates a great big problem for the city.
I'm not aware of that problem. Perhaps you can enlighten me at some point.
Yeah, I will. Because it's been happening.
I don't think that.
Are you aware that, Mr. President?
The city planner doesn't have the authority to override a construction official.
Yes, thank you. But that has happened. I would like, I would go to your office.
Tell me, tell me about it. And I'll talk to your city planner.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing to our attention, Councilwoman.
Well, the city planner is providing the code official.
Sure. Anything else, Councilwoman? Councilwoman Golding?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, over the, over the past several seasons, I've been in contact with residents and different groups. Particularly at, like at Matano Park, when they wanna use the field, the baseball field and the soccer players wanna play, there's been a number of instances where there have been conflicts there when they wanna both play at the same time. I've been in contact with the county, of course, there's a permit process and even though that's in place, there have always been some problems and some, some mere catastrophes between, you know, the soccer players as well as, you know, the baseball players there. Been in contact with also other groups. And even though I've encouraged them to go down to the waterfront to use particularly the soccer players, the fields down there and other areas where there maybe feels available, inevitably I get the response, you know, why, if we are residents, we live here in this area, you know, we would like to play here. Um, you know, we evidently, they also say, why don't we have more fields in the city of Elizabeth to attract more players and things of that nature? Soccer, as we know, has, is, is big not only in Latin American countries, but the Italians, Portuguese, European countries.
Sure.
And we have, you know, when you look at that total population, it's a significant number. I've come to learn that the Bayway Polish Home, that property is for sale. And I would like for the city clergy forward in writing a letter to, I guess, our business administrator to explore the possibility of acquiring that property to develop a soccer field on it for the residents of the city of Elizabeth. I think that location over there, we have a baseball field over there. We have the Erksleben Center. And I think in conjunction with that property, it might be a good location to develop an additional field which is great for our youth, you know, to keep them off the streets, keep them busy, and even for the adults that may wanna use it, you know, as well. Soccer has become a leading sport here in the United States.
Is there a price tag on that?
Well, that's why I'd like for them to explore.
The Director of Planning and Community Development is, as we speak, looking into that acquisition.
Yeah. Well, I've spoken to him, but I would like a formal written letter sent to our BA requesting the exploration and possibly acquiring that property.
Okay, ma'am, look. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, once around, Councilwoman Gonzalez, anything else?
Yeah, no, that's a disposable thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, ma'am. Respectfully, this is once around as a courtesy to you. I respect you. You've had your opportunity to speak, wanted to make, once again. Go ahead, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. If we do do that, Councilman, I hope it's just for children, the children's field because a lot of times you get a lot of adult groups who come in from all over, from Staten Island, from everywhere else, and the children are still left out. Every time we build a new field or new facility for children, it seems to be like adults are using it. So if you can advocate for the children and make sure.
Oh, yeah. And it's gonna be primarily, and they should have the, the prime use of that for them. And if they're not using it, then I think we can open it up to others for use.
Yeah, because a lot of times the children are still locked out of, of the play fields because you have boot paying or coming in from outside using it and basically taking up the schedule for one and two years at a time. That's probably what we have now in our own recreation department.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez, anything else?
No, that's a Mr. President.
Councilwoman Madison?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to the police director, there was a traffic study made on Tora Avenue. I would like to know the results of that study that was done the last couple of weeks. Tora Avenue, I'm between I and, and South Seven Street. I Street.
High Street and South.
And South Seven.
Councilman, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Councilman, question?
Uh, yeah, just briefly, I agree with Councilman Gonzalez. And as a matter of fact, I did speak to a director. And I'm aware of the fact that, that Avenue is being pursued right now. So I hope the city is successful, you know, obtaining that, that property. And I agree with you, Councilwoman. It has to be for our youth. We really have to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman today?
Pass.
Councilman Jackus?
Yeah, Mr. President, with regards to what Councilman Gonzalez brought up, having grown up in that backyard and playing baseball many years on that Joder Field there, it was my understanding that field was always housing authority property and not, um, and it's not city property, it's housing authority property. And also, the Polish home is Polish home.
Yeah.
It has the property up to the fence line and the rest is, is housing authority. I do recall growing up on that field because I just lived right across that small street, the parking lot of the manor, and played at Joder Field. And remember the army tanks when it was actually part of the, um, the armory. You might remember that. I don't know if you do. But I can remember that.
Before your time, you're.
But I can remember playing on cannons and, and tanks.
I remember when the armory was the armory.
Yeah. And they used to house all their military equipment down at Joder Field where the Erksleben Center is right now. Because I remember playing on it.
Right.
But I don't know if that's Polish home property. I think that's housing authority property.
Well, it could well be. But the Polish home has a building and it does have property on which the, the home is located. And that property has been up for sale for a couple of years. The housing authority was interested in purchasing it, but the Director of Planning and Community Development tells me that the housing authority is no longer interested in it and, and that he is seriously looking at the acquisition for the purposes, for recreation purposes, as you discussed.
Well, I, I think it's a tremendous idea. Because I actually learned how to ice skate before the army corps came in. The, the creek used to overflow onto Joder Field. I sup and win. And we used to ice skate on that.
You must be older than me, I think.
I know my Bayway, let me tell you. So, so, I know, I know that. But the thing is, is that the, there were men groups, organizations that did play soccer on those fields. Irish played there, the Portuguese played there. There were men, actually. And I recall watching them play on Sunday afternoons. Oh, yeah. Oh, the history of Bayway is unbelievable, but, um, sometimes it takes a backseat to Elmore and other Eric Peters Town, other area. But we can change that rather quickly.
Absolutely.
Real quick.
That's a piece of history, I didn't know that.
To bring in the kids, I know the Board of Education at times uses Joder Field for softball games and baseball games after school. I don't know if you're, if you're gonna be willing to share with the kids that are playing baseball because that could conflict. I know Pop Warner used to practice there. So there, there's a number of conflicts that could happen there. And men play softball there at night, so.
Well, that's why I just.
Be aware of it.
To have to explore at the same, of the possibility of, you know.
Very good.
And I agree.
I wouldn't be opposed to putting natural, the synthetic turf down. I'll support you on that because if you're gonna do that, it should go there. It's going in the first ward, it went into the third ward, it's gotta go into the second.
Councilman Jackus, anything else? Motion to adjourn. You.